A call, the meeting to order. Welcome to the School District of Waukesha. September 11th, 2019. The Board of Education meeting. I'd like to start by having a stand and pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, will you please take the roll?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Cory Montiel.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinichek.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here. And Sue, will you also verify that the meeting has been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
For tonight, I'd like to read to you the Pentagon Memorial. September 11th. Remember the lives lost and the families they left behind. The first responders who bravely fought to save lives. The members of our military who have served in response. Never forget. Hard to transition into a meeting, isn't it? We normally would have bright lights at this time where we celebrate great things that our students are doing, but given our first month and the busyness of the new school year, we're not going to have bright lights tonight. But we will begin with recognitions. And Sharon, will you please present those for us?
Good evening. Okay, so I'm going to start actually with an introduction. So Brian Lyde, do you want to have to stand over here? So I'm excited to introduce Brian Lyde. He's the new Assistant Principal at Horning Middle School. If you recall, he was approved last month in the August Board Meeting. Mr. Lyde is a bilingual dynamic leader who excels in relationship building with students, staff, and parents. He values being visible, being proactive, and as an active listener. So I'd like to welcome Brian Lyde.
Thank you, Sharon. The check is in the mail. Active listener, ask my wife, she might say something different. So thank you again for having that special meeting to get me on board. As you all know, we go top-heavy at this time to get ready for the kids to come into the building. And Bob and I did not waste a second. We got right to work. And I'm very thankful. That's another reason my family wanted to come out and support. They're just as grateful for me to have this opportunity to work for an outstanding district in Waukesha. Your organization, your commitment to multiculturalism is just beyond compare. I'm very impressed and I'm really happy that I have been chosen to be a part of this district. So, thank you very much and have a good evening.
You have some more for us, don't you Sharon?
I do. I'm back again.
Excellent.
Okay, so I am also going to present the Employee Recognition Award for September, and it's being presented this evening to Maria Myers. So Maria, come on up.
Okay, well, she's making her way. Maria started in the district in 2014. Her nominators began by saying that Maria has been leading language equity work at South High School for the past three years as a Spanish teacher. She has taught AP Spanish Language and launched AP Spanish Lit and AP Dual-Language Seminar. Maria has taken the challenge of building these courses and also building the belief in our linguistically talented students that they can be successful in their bilingualism and bilinguacy at these scholarly levels. Maria mentors other teachers as well as works in collaboration to build the expertise of the partners she co-teaches with so that her co-teachers can gradually teach these high-level courses with independence. In addition to these responsibilities, Maria has completely taken over the leadership responsibilities that ensure Waukesha South students are accessing the State of Wisconsin Seal of Bilinguality and Global Education Achievement Certificate. She coordinates all their onboarding and supports students through service learning, essay writing, and finally, in the celebration. The last and most enduring reason Maria Myers deserves this award is due to her disposition towards students who have learned to not recognize themselves as the linguistically talented scholars they are. Many students have learned to view their bilingualism as a deficit, something to hide, to disregard, and disengage from while at school. Maria inspires these students to see the opportunity, possibility, and pride in being a multilingual and multicultural student. She has changed the life trajectory of students who once believed that their future would follow paths that were known, helping at hospitals, stores, mechanics, garaging, to now seeing a wider variety of career paths, including human resources, law, public service, government, and engineering. It is the disposition and belief that Maria has for the students that creates the nexus of possibility and belief in the students themselves that makes her stand apart and makes her a change-maker. So on behalf of the School District of Waukesha, I'm excited to congratulate Maria Myers on being selected to receive the Waukesha School District Employee Recognition Award.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you. Sure. Okay, close your stuff. Here we go. Back to class. Okay.
We have Kleenex.
Okay. Don't take a picture now. Okay, so I started working in Waukesha six years ago, and I love it. I love being able to work with my kiddos. And by my kiddos, I mean all of them. The non-native speakers and the native speakers. I have become very in touch with the families of Waukesha South and with the staff of Waukesha South and just the community in general. I am so blessed to have also a very big supporting team behind me, and that's all of you, approving all these high courses and all this high rigor. Trust me, I hold it really high. They will tell you I'm a heart grader. But I love to hear them say, yes, but I know if I pass your class, I can pass anything in college. So that's what we want, and that's what I want for them, to believe that they can do anything in front of them. I really appreciate your support to the foreign language and to South in general. And thank you so much for this recognition. Obviously, I'm going to go cry in a minute. I really, really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Now, that's a great way to start a meeting, Sharon. All right. Yes. Have a good night.
Take care.
You have lots to do tomorrow, we know and understand. Okay, we're now at the section of our meeting where there's an opportunity for citizens to speak. As it has been past practice, we'll limit that to a three-minute time. And at the two-and-a-half-minute mark, Amanda will just give you a nod saying that there's 30 seconds left. If you could wrap up your comments in that time, we'd appreciate it. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education, refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that would detract from the meeting. And also at this time, please silence your phones. And we do have two people signed up. Ellie McHenry is first and followed by Paul Reese. Nope. Is it on? Thanks, Ellie.
Sorry.
That one echoed. No, go ahead, Ellie. You're good.
Earlier this month, there was a lovely post on Facebook welcoming new teachers to the district. In the comments section, someone asked how many teachers had retired or resigned and what percent of the total staff they represented. The answer was 7%. The person who asked felt that that was an acceptable number. But the year before, it was 10%, and the year before that, it was 10%. In fact, in the last five years, we have turned over almost half of the entire teaching staff. Early on, the majority were retirees, but increasingly, it is becoming resignations. That kind of turnover is stressful for children, and the turnover is highest in the buildings where the students can least afford it. What drives this turnover? One of the major reasons year after year is the lack of time. Everyone who goes into education knows that they are going to be taking work home and coming in on the weekends. But being a teacher today in this district also includes covering for colleagues who are out sick when there are no subs available, or covering for art, music, or fire ed teachers whose classes are canceled because they are being pulled in to sub when there are no subs available, or covering the lunchroom or playground because there are no aides available. On several occasions at Board meetings, it has been pointed out that there were no layoffs this year. However, when people retire or resign and aren't replaced, the rest of the staff has to share what that person did last year. So everyone's workload goes up. As an example, a librarian retired last year and was not replaced. This year, we have five librarians in the district to cover all of the library needs in all of the elementary and secondary buildings. And remember, the librarians are also the media specialists for these buildings. Not replacing people who leave means that those who are left have to pick up the slack. But the time spent in meetings is the biggest offender of all. Meetings occur before school, after school, and during prep time. There are building meetings, job-alike meetings, special ed meetings, PLC meetings, and of course, committee meetings. Everyone joins at least one committee because otherwise, you aren't a team player. A current staff member, who is on several committees, had a total of 10 before-school meetings in the first two weeks of the school year. The meeting issue has been addressed before, yet every year it comes back. There is no set policy for how many outside-of-the-school-day meetings are allowed. Every building does it differently. Some buildings are quite reasonable, one or two a month, and others have three or four per month. At four per month, we are talking about five full days of meetings per school year. Limiting meetings may not end the constant turnover, but it is a place to start.
Mr. Reese?
Our thought last month, Mr. O'Brien brought up about giving certain class teachers bonuses and that, and I wanted to say how against it I am is beyond compare. And it's not that I disagree with a lot of what he said. I agree with what he said. But it's coming real close to that line of buying votes. And that's where I have the problem, is when you start delegating bonuses to certain people, it's, look at what I can give you. You know, and that's where I have the problem with it. It's not the idea of it I'm okay with, but it's that point. I have no problem with even increasing pay for teachers of, like Ellie said, there are teachers in certain schools that the turnover rate is higher than others, and that needs to be addressed. And like I said before here, if I work second shift, I get a premium for working second shift. If I have two schools and one is a real easy, a lot easier job than the other, well, I want to work at the easier job. I'm getting paid the same, you know? If my requirements are the same, you know, why wouldn't I want the easier job if the compensation is the same? But also, Mr. O'Brien brought up that we have this rainy day fund, and I have a problem with the fact that we keep putting the same amount of money into it all the time. It doesn't sound like it's good budgeting if you're putting always hundreds of thousands of dollars into it. It shouldn't be like, we're going to, hey, have a budget, so we can put money over here and never touch it until, I don't know what the plans are with it, you know, why it's done. It seems like it should be something that, we have a goal, and if we fall short of that goal, we take out of it, and if we exceed that amount, then we put in it. You know? It's real simple. It's not something that we're trying to have a big pot of money here because that could cause a lot of problems with things. Anyways, those are my two cents. Thanks.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board at this All right. Seeing none, we're going to move on to our minute approval. There are the regular Board meeting minutes of October 14th is the only set of minutes.
August 14?
What did I say? Oh, boy. August 14th.
Coming up.
I'm living in the future, huh? Or way in the past. Thank you, Diane. Thank you, Diane. August 14th, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I saw move.
Thank you, Diane. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amanda. Any other discussion other than the President not knowing what date the minutes are? Mr. O'Brien?
I don't think there's a second on the call question. I don't think, I don't think there could have been a second on the call question.
Oh, back here.
Call the question doesn't require a second.
You mean for the last, for the last meeting?
Yeah. In the minutes, it says that there was a second on calling the question. I don't think it requires a second.
Call for the previous question. It does require, it says, call for the previous question. Yes, it does require a second. It does not require.
For a second?
Yes. And we had it.
I just was trying to remember.
So I'm just going by the card, what we actually did?
Then we must have done it, then.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So we'll leave that, we'll leave that in there, I think. So I think that was accurate. Okay. Any other? Okay. Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinichek.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Moving on to our communications. Dr. Gray, did you receive any?
Yep. I have three letters this evening. First one is from John Ashley, the Executive Director of WASB, and he's congratulating Amanda Roddy for achieving the Level 1 WASB Membership Recognition. Second letter also from Mr. Ashley, this time congratulating Kurt O'Brien for achieving the Level 1 WASB Member Recognition. And finally, letter three, also from John Ashley, WASB Director, congratulating Karen Reinichek for achieving a Level 3 in the WASB Membership Recognition Program. So congratulations to our Board members. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Gray, and congratulations to my fellow Board members for those awards. Yes. Diane, do you have a Waukesha Education Foundation report?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much. First, I have great news to share regarding the Waukesha Education Foundation sponsorships. Findorf has renewed their sponsorship for this year with the foundation at the Gold Level, which is $2,500 of support, and Generac has increased their annual sponsorship from a $1,000 silver level up to a gold as well. So we want to thank Findorf and Generac for those $2,500 gold sponsorships. Next, I want to announce our three Waukesha Education Foundation Community Partner Award winners for this year. The recipient of the 2019 WEF Corporate Partner Award is CPX Transformer Solutions Incorporated, located on Prairie Avenue in Waukesha. SPX was nominated for their involvement with the MADE Manufacturing Automotive Design Engineering Program, which offers job shadowing experiences, tours, and workshops that provide industry exposure for students. One recent noteworthy SPX initiative was starting the Fee MADE Subcommittee to promote and mentor female students in careers within the MADE areas. This year's WEF Community Partner Award is Kyle Soderstrom and Culver's Restaurant located at 2,600 North Grandview Boulevard in Waukesha. Culver's on Grandview works to support our schools in many ways by hosting fundraising nights that provide 10% of their sales to fund programs, clubs, events, and activities. In 2018, they provided over $50,000 donated to the schools and students from those events. Another special part of this community partnership is providing many sweet student treats, cones as incentives for the student work, and also providing pints for staff celebrations and even staff appreciation meals. I'm especially proud to announce our third recipient of the 2019 Sally Jo Machelko Lifetime Excellence in Education Award. It's going to be going to Mrs. Barbara Brzezink. Barb is being honored for her years of service to the School District of Waukesha as a kindergarten teacher, as an administrator, and for years of service right here on the Board of Education. All three award recognitions will occur at the first evening for education, the new name for the COE of the past, which will be held at the Ingleside Hotel on Thursday, November 14th, beginning at 5:00 PM. The community is invited to this inaugural fundraising event for the Waukesha Education Foundation, and tickets are on sale now. We hope that all the Board members will consider joining us for this special occasion and to recognize Barb for her honor. Many sponsorship opportunities are available for things like table decorations, coat check, grant slideshow, and many more, and we have full and half-page ads available in the program that we'll have for that evening. As you all know, since its inception, WEF has granted over $290,000 to support projects and initiatives that directly benefit the students of the School District of Waukesha, and this is one of our major fundraising events. So we're hoping to have the same continued community support to make that happen. Event and organization information can be found at our website at waukeshaeducationfoundation.org. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Diane. And congratulations to those award winners that will be presented in November. Fantastic. One of which we know very well. Moving on to our Charter, School, and Program Report given by Mr. Baumgart.
Yes, thank you. I do have a few random thoughts that I had put down. As you know, the school year is just getting started, so some of it, more to come in the future, I'm sure. But one item, we had a great opening event at Hawthorne about two weeks ago. A lot of participation, a lot of Board members were there, and everything was very positive. I had a chance to talk with some staff and some families that day, and everything was just great. Another item, if you get a chance to visit a school or two and see the results of the tremendous efforts that were put on this past summer to bring it about, please do that. Bring your badge so you can actually test it and see how you're getting in and out of the buildings and so on. I will admit that there have been, there were a few glitches that I encountered as, not on the getting in, but some other things that were a little bit troubling, and it's my hope that these will be reviewed and planned for the next year so that we can avoid repeating some of those issues. Another item, tomorrow, the 12th, is the day that they will be introducing the Maker Space at Whittier, which was possible due to the very generous grant from General Electric. That's, I believe, at 10 o'clock in the morning, probably about an hour. And the last item I mentioned here was the Summer Institute, which was held on August 26th. I know, again, a couple of Board members, others were there. Very well done. Some interesting discussions took place as we moved from room to room and found out what's going on. And again, the engagement of the staff, wonderful, very wonderful. That's all I have to report.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Off to a good start.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah. Moving on to our consent agenda. Darren, did we have any public gifts to report?
Yeah, three gifts. Waukesha South received $500 from Champion Contractors LLC to be used for girls volleyball program. Student Services received $800 from Pro Healthcare to be used for the Peers for Peers Clubs, and Prairie Elementary received $2,500 from Meyer for new playground equipment.
Nice way to start. Nice way to start the year. Thank you to those generous gifts. Yes. We did not have any expulsions, which is a good thing. Usually don't during the summer, but every once in a while, we do. There's a variety of categories, various categories for approval tonight in the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to have anything set aside for a separate consideration? Okay. Mr. O'Brien, will you please present the consent agenda for approval?
Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of eight new or modified teacher contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed at your desk. I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCaffrey. Discussion? Mr. Baumgart?
I'm not disagreeing with anything. I just like some information on the pink sheet. One of the reasons is an increased level from 50% to include 10% for private schools. I didn't understand how the private schools come into play on this.
Sharon?
It'd be, oh, okay. I'm sorry.
That comes from Title I funding, so once they get their allocation, then, depending on enrollment.
Okay.
So that's where that extra 10% came from.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else on the consent agenda? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinichek.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Thank you, Kurt. Moving on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. We had a first, a really strong first week, and for once in a long, long time, the weather cooperated. We had not a lot of humidity and not a lot of heat, and if you've been in it, some of our schools, South comes to mind, you can see temps hitting 100 degrees when it's 85, 90 out and humid, and so we were lucky. Now, this week hasn't been quite as cooperative, but it still isn't the kind of heat we've had in prior years, so that's some good news. Things went well, and again, I want to thank our entire staff, literally everyone that's helped us get ready for the first day and made it through a good, strong first week. So it took a lot of effort, and I know some of you were at some of our preliminary events prior to school starting, some of our PD programs, and that was all part of that, getting people ready to go. And again, good first week. We are also, as of tonight, now fully staffed. We were waiting on two more positions. One was business ed, one was physics. Again, those are two very hard-to-find, hard-to-fill positions out there. But we are, we're all set, and we've got good people in those places, so we're 100% staff, and hopefully, we stay that way at least for a little while. So when you have roughly 930 teachers and another 100 to 200 aides, at any given time, you are looking for people as they come and go. I have, I'm going to pass this around. Every year, WA Member Benefits has an art contest, and we had two winners this year. This is a fifth grader and a seventh grader. And if I didn't tell you that and you looked at this, you would probably not believe they were a fifth grader and a seventh grader. So we will pass this around. It's on the back, they're on the back here, they made cards out of them, but the art is just absolutely fantastic. And again, it's one of those programs that we really excel in in this district that doesn't necessarily make it to our state report card, but it is something that we do well in this district. And then finally, I'd like congratulations to Kyle Beddloff. He's a longtime North High swim coach, and he was named Wisconsin National Federation of High School Swimming Coach of the Year. So congratulations to Kyle. And that's my report.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you for sharing that. Very good. Moving on to our committee reports, that's where we do most of our heavy lifting in the committees, where we rotate which committee actually gets to present first, and Teaching and Learning Committee, given by Mr. Dietz, is batter number one.
Good. Thank you, Mr. President. The last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting was held September 3rd, 2019, at 6:00 PM. There was one action item.
And that's my report.
Excellent, yeah. Thank, thank you for sharing that.
Yep.
Very good. Moving on to our committee reports, that's where we do most of our heavy lifting in the committees, where we rotate which committee actually gets to present first, and Teaching and Learning Committee, given by Mr. Dietz, is batter number one.
Good. Thank you, Mr. President. The last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting was held September 3rd, 2019, at 6:00 PM. There was one action item, three information items, and one discussion item that appear on the agenda for the Teaching and Learning portion this evening. The first action item was the annual approval of our At-Risk Identification Plan. This requires an annual approval. Luke Pinion took the committee through the process and procedures for identifying children at risk of not graduating from high school in grades five through 12. On a vote of five to zero, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the At-Risk Identification Plan as presented. We request board approval, and, and I so move.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Baumgart? Discussion? All right, Sue, let's take a vote on approving the annual At-Risk Identification Plan.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes 9-0. Not, not much has changed on that from previous years, so that's probably why we didn't have much discussion on it, so. Greg?
The first information item, Math Vision 2020. After two years of analyzing a high school math outcomes and course pathways with a group of high school math teachers, a recommendation was made to develop a new math vision. This new vision, Math Vision 2020, looks to realign the mathematics course sequence into an integrated math model, which brings Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II together into multiple courses based on standards instead of three separate courses based on content. Multiple work teams of teachers are working with Dan Pachinsky and Dan Keizer on aligning standards, developing supports for students with an IEP, English language learners, as well as students who struggle or need acceleration. The need for the change, scope of the work, and the planned timeline were addressed at the meeting. The second informational item related to Science Graduation Requirement Proposal. With the recent addition of AP, Environmental Science, as well as the change in organic chemistry to a year-long course a few years ago, more conversation has taken place around increasing the science course offerings at the high school level. State statute lays out a minimum of three credits of science in order to graduate. School district policy currently stipulates what science courses are taken at each grade level. After communicating with all high school science teachers and principals, a smaller team of teachers came together to discuss what technical change could be made to our policy to allow for more science courses to be developed moving forward. A recommendation is being forwarded to the Policy Committee to adjust our science graduation policy to encompass the three credits, and they come from the pillars of biology, chemistry, and physics. West High School teacher Bob Willis and Dan Keizer shared information and the recommendation with the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee at their meeting. The third information item related to the Reading State Statute Goals. Melissa Yao, Director of Elementary Learning, provided an annual report to the Teaching and Learning Committee, updating the board on the district's comprehensive literacy model. Discussion items that we had on our last meeting's agenda, the first one and only one, related to the Advanced Placement Data and Action Plans. Consistent with the board goals and the redesigning Ready Framework, Advanced Placement Courses provide students with the opportunity to experience college-level coursework while still in high school. The research from College Board have stated that students taking an AP course have better outcomes in their post-high school education as compared to students who have not taken an AP course. Other benefits include high persistent rates and earlier graduation rates. Amy Rebel and Dan Keizer presented a brief overview of what advanced placement, or AP, and AP exams are, and some trend data on course enrollment and exam signup.
And that is a discussion at the board level. Does anyone have questions or ideas or information that we'd like to ask Jody? Mr. O'Brien?
There was a chart on how we compare to other districts, and we're probably a little bit behind, maybe by one or two AP courses compared to other districts that we should be offering. Maybe that'll be helped as we change the science curriculum requirements, which I think we're working on through policy, give us more opportunities to look for more AP-type courses. I think not just science, but there's all sorts of stuff that we could probably expand to, but if we choose to do that.
Sure.
Yeah, I think we're around, is it 23 that we offer? 23, I think roughly in that area, and I think the top school is offering something like 27, you know, in terms of quantity of AP courses offered, somewhere in that range.
I think, when I remember from the chart, if we added one or two, we'd be in the mid.
At the top.
At the median. We'd be at the median. We're slightly below the median in terms of the districts around us, just one or two more AP courses.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Yeah, our offerings over the last 10 years have increased, and our participation rate has hugely increased at, at all of our schools, actually, and, and, and that's a good thing. I, you know, the one point that you pointed out, Mr. Dietz, is it really helps kids with persist, being persistent, you know, learning, having that discipline, and having that level of work in high school to prepare you for college. You have to be persistent in college, and so there's some really good things that happen with students that do take these courses. They're not required to take the test, actually, but most of the students, I believe, do choose to, 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 to take the, the AP test, and if they do take it, and if they get to a certain level, college can actually waive the cost of credits for particular subjects, and that's decided on by each, each college. So our students can benefit financially by taking these courses in high school to prepare themselves for college, so it's, it's good to see that. Cory?
Thank you. Just to, I guess, echo off those comments, Mr. President. I know of one student who currently is graduating UW-Madison. She's a graduate of Waukesha South. She was in the Engineering Academy, is doing fantastic, and will graduate UW-Madison in three years, and I believe.
Madison in three years is very rare.
Yeah, and I believe she's going on to law school, so, which is particularly good to hear.
Yeah. That's great. That's a lot of money.
For an engineer, it is.
What a waste of a talent.
Ooh. Coming from the engineers. Any other comments, questions? Okay, Greg?
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee Report. Our next committee meeting will be held Tuesday, October 1st, here in the boardroom.
All right, thank you. Moving on to our Safety and Security Committee Report given by Ms. Reinacek.
I have no information this evening.
Okay. We'll move on to our Human Resources and Compensation Committee, given by Mr. O'Brien.
I have no report tonight.
And moving on to Policy by Mr. Baumgart?
Hey.
What?
Well, I.
Delaware, the beginning of the year.
Just like, just like the school year, we had, we had a couple of months off for you guys.
Yep.
You know, recently, but I'm gonna tell you right now that the Policy Committee meeting will be re, readjourn, not re-getting together, you know what I mean, Tuesday, 17th of September, that is September, not October, yes, and at 4:00, and the word is, we got lots of stuff to look at, which we'll be bringing forward, so.
We, we, we know you were busy last year.
Yeah.
We expect the same this year.
Lynn tells me there's a big load sitting there.
Thank you, Bill.
All right.
Moving on to Technology, given by Mrs. Voight.
And I do have a report. We did meet on the 28th of August at 5:30, and there were no action items or information items on the agenda, but there are three discussion items that I would like to share with you, under the category of instruction-related technology. This year marks the sixth year since our four original Wave 1 schools, Bethesda, Blair, and Hillcrest, and North, kicked off our Waukesha 1 program. Several things have stayed consistent with the program since its inception. The iPad is still the device of choice, and the commitment of the staff on, of finding new ways to leverage the device for instruction is still strong. The cost of the device has been reduced by 40%, while the features and the functionality have improved dramatically on both the student and teacher classroom management side. So all of the iPad, all, all in all, the iPad is still viewed as the most full-featured device for students at all levels. Do you want to talk about each one separately?
Yeah, sir, yeah, I think we should.
Like, kind of pause on each one, because I have several.
Do you have anything else to say on?
Well, but not on that topic.
On the Waukesha 1 program?
But then I have.
Okay.
Move on to other things.
Any, any questions, comments on Waukesha 1? Yes, Kurt?
We've asked for an effort to try and figure out. Whoops, again. Thank you. We've asked for efforts to try and figure out how the iPads are being used at what hours, and see if that can be tracked, and that information communicated back to parents. Not sure it can be done, but we've asked Steve to look into it, so.
Yeah, this, I mean, this was a differentiating program when we first started, you know, when we first embarked on it, and we weren't really sure where it was going and how impactful it was gonna be, if it was gonna last, if this is, you know, I remember those early years, we had lots of questions, so it's, 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 it's proven itself out over the years, and it's, I think, differentiated our district from many other districts, and got a lot of other districts kind of starting on going to a one-to-one scenario, so. I've, I've, in this last, I don't think in the last couple of years, I haven't heard really anything negative, and it's usually positive kinds of comments that are coming to me. I think a few years ago, there was a negative comment that someone was saying that they didn't like their student being able to surf the web in class. Now, I think that's changed where we have the ability to at least control that, so that was an improvement.
Yeah, we, we took a look at the classroom, Apple Classroom, for monitoring purposes, and that's a dramatic improvement compared to six years ago when I was part of that first wave, and we, I was used to having access to that type of monitoring with my IBM kind of computer systems, and not having that for the, for the iPad side was a challenge, but now that's.
You lived that.
I, yes, I did. That was my last year of teaching.
And you're glad that we've advanced?
Yes. I wanted, I wanted to see how much things had improved over the time period, and they have.
Mr. O'Brien?
Just to offer, since you brought it up, I know Representative Allen has spoken for it in front of us before, his concerns about how heavily we use technology in the district. I think there is a, a concern that if we overuse technology, are we creating the proper student-to-student interaction, student-to-teacher interaction, if we have them sitting on a computer all the time versus just actually interfacing with each other? So it's not clear to me what that entails within our own classrooms, but the other part of it is by tracking, trying to get information, we'd also like to know that the, the kids aren't misusing it when they're home, using it all hours of the night, stuff like that. Parents can always tell that, and if, if there's a way we can find that out and communicate that to parents, and then they can make the choice on how to do it, okay?
Cory?
Yeah, Mr. O'Brien, I think it's a good point, and I think the community at large would appreciate knowing what protections are in place and what, the use statistics. I just want to say, my own experience, I had one student go all the way through Summit View, the other one is currently there in fifth grade. I've gone to, I think, three conferences where they've had student self-directed conferences, and they use their iPad, and it's, it's extremely well-done. The parents show up, my daughter shows me where to sit, tells me what to do, which she loves, and then she puts on a presentation, and it's something that she built with the assistance of her teacher and the school, and it's these apps that are progressively getting more complex and more detailed each year. She shows her work. They also, a lot of these classrooms have smart boards, where they can project it up there. It's a fantastic tool. And I was worried, before I was a board member, I was a parent, and I first heard about iPads coming, and I was hesitant to think that it was a great idea, but I've been pleased to learn that, at least in my own experience, they have been a great idea. It is, I think Representative Allen's concern is, is legitimate, but I, I've seen it in action in my own area, that it's, it's, leads the interaction among the students, they discuss what they're building, what they're doing, they compare projects. It's, it's been impressive, I've been happy to see it. I was glad to be proven wrong, so.
Mr. Baumgart?
I would just, ditto what you're saying. I, I don't have any kids in, in the classrooms anymore, but I, I get to see them operating in the classroom, and I, I would have to say, I think there's still a lot of, and Kurt brings up a good point about the kids conversing with each other, and I see more of it in the classroom than I would have anticipated, and whether, whether we went through some kind of a wave here, you know, settling back down after the technology became more, we became more accustomed to technology, and some of the stuff is flattening out a little bit, I think that's happening. I really am a little bit more concerned along that line, too, having grandkids with these at home now. You see less interaction at home than what you're seeing in the schools, and is that because they're spending too much time on that screen? So if we can, again, it's not gonna be our bit to control that much, but, but is it an issue, and can we get parents to realize that that's not a good thing? So there's, there's something to deal with here, but on and on, and we have, we have definitely improved. I had an opportunity yesterday, bumped, before I guess it was, bumped into Brian Yearling doing some work upstairs, and, and I, you know, I asked him, I says, "How's it going this year?" And, you know, he says, "You know, I got into this job thinking one day I'd be able to eliminate the job from existence because of the help that isn't needed anymore." He says, "We're getting closer to that." He says, "You know, the people are, the staff are using it, they're comfortable with it. The old issue of it's terrible, you know, we ran into some of that six years ago, just shouldn't be there." He doesn't hear that anymore, and he says, "He hears people coming from other school districts saying, 'My God, you know, what you guys have done.'"
Mm-hmm.
That's good stuff, good stuff.
Mr. O'Brien?
So, you know, hearing that, I guess there's some support for at least providing information to parents about how the iPads are being used at home, I would encourage administration to continue to investigate some way of collecting that data and reporting that to the parents of the children with iPads. We're the ones supplying the iPads, we're the ones putting the iPads in the hands of the children that they take home, so we do bear some responsibility for how those iPads are being used, and at least we should be letting the parents know what the usage is at what hours and in what way, if at all possible. The comment made at Technology was, "I'm not sure that there is such a way we can do that," da-da-da. The reality is, I'm sure there's a way, because it's a computer, there's always a way. Someone has an app for that, I can tell you that. So hopefully, administration will follow up on this and, and give us some way of reporting this information to parents.
Anything else on this topic? Diane?
All right, the second one is the Personal Electronic Computing Device Grant was established by the Legislature for the 1920 school year. The grant funded $125 for each enrolled ninth grader to enable districts with matching funds to use the grant money to purchase iPads, which is what we did, I should say. The grant has been eliminated this year, and there is no expectation that it will return. So that's all I have, if anybody wants to discuss the election-year kind of opportunity that has gone away after the election's over.
Quick move on, quick move on, Diane.
All right. The 1920 school year, school district of Waukesha has renewed the emphasis on using Blackboard as our supported classroom, classroom management system. The Teaching and Learning Department committed to using Blackboard to create and distribute pre-built Blackboard course shells to all teaching staff in the district, and the goal is to have that kind of rolled out over the next couple of years, thinking that by the end of this year, to get to about 80%, and then continue that trend upward. The, I think, very positive thing about that is that when you have a family that has kids at different levels, having one Blackboard kind of uniform system to be able to check is, is less confusing than having multiple different kinds of platforms that they might be working with.
Any questions, discussion on Blackboard?
And there again.
Amanda?
Over my years of experience, it's gotten much better.
Amanda?
Ms. Voight, you had mentioned something about Blackboard, the multiple students and families, is that, like, I understand what Blackboard is. Is Blackboard used at the higher levels of, of schooling for parents to go check on homework and things like that? Is that what I'm understanding?
What you can do is set up a class in, in Blackboard, and then have a uniform, this is what, I might say, to my business law class would be offered, you know, that that
I'm not going to see it yet.
So Blackboard is only used at the secondary level?
Yes. Sorry, I don't have a microphone. It's predominantly used in secondary levels, is what I'm hearing behind me. I'm just, I'm just making sure I didn't lose, I didn't miss anything, I didn't sign up for an account that I was supposed to sign up for. All right, because we have various platforms at the lower levels. Okay, thank you. That was just clarification.
Kurt?
Yeah, I'm talking about all this stuff, technology and the funds that we can get from the state at times, and that, I know is a pride topic, but money being given away to support this. Politicians are notorious for creating grants during election time. The school safety grants were not coming from the DPI, they were coming from the Attorney General. Why? Because the Attorney General is running for election. WASB has taken issue, and a number of school districts have taken issue, that they would like to stay away from these types of grants, because small districts really don't have the staff to apply for them, and they see them as just a political grant process. So I'm kind of glad the $125 is disappearing. It really was not something apparently the state wanted to do, other than the fact it was election year, so.
Diane?
All right, moving on to infrastructure-related technology. The School District of Waukesha IT Department is entering into an agreement with the School District of Kettle Moraine. The agreement will allow Kettle Moraine and the School District of Waukesha to exchange location space to place backup equipment in each other's data centers, providing the off-site storage and disaster recovery protection, which I think is a great idea.
Any comments, questions on that? That is, that's a good advance, very good advance.
All right, then, next, this is an item that pertains directly to each of us as board members. The Technology Committee will be investigating the use of Board Docs. Board Docs is a software platform to establish an electronic document control system that can service the board's needs for document control and distribution. The committee will begin research into what is needed to implement a board document management system, and will bring a recommendation forward to the full board. In this particular category, if I can start the discussion, I was going over my materials for my first year on the school board, and this is the envelope for one policy meeting. This is the board for one finance and facility meeting. You're just a sample of the quantity of paper that's generated right now. And I have a real hard time, after, you know, working for years in technology, to not then have access to, I want to find an answer. And it's somewhere in one of the year's policy discussions, or one of the year's finance and facilities discussion, and you don't have access to that readily without the technology kind of sort, you know, do a search-and-find kind of situation. So I'm a big advocate of this particular type of thing happening. And it's supposed to take her job of creating these document packages that go out every Friday and getting it down to maybe like a one-hour experience instead of, I'm guessing it takes a lot more than that now, to get all the photocopies made and sorted and get the packets ready. So that's...
The work still needs to go into the information.
Oh, right.
It's the...
Distribution and then the whole...
Yeah. Board Docs, we actually, some of you may remember, may not remember, we started to look at Board Docs 2004 was the first time, 2005? Yeah, so this isn't the first time around, and it, things have changed since then, and that company has matured and their product has matured. So we'll be interested to see how this goes in your committee.
Okay. Any discussion about that? Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I did ask the question about the difference between this and just distributing an Adobe PDF file, which is another low-cost way. And the reality is, is that there's just too many documents that need to be handled special, that hand them out in Adobe PDF where you might have confidential information that's lumped into there. Using Board Docs, you can categorize them, so it's more protected, you know. How many people have gotten an email where there's a whole bunch of information in that email that the sender probably didn't want to have sent? And the idea of having Board Docs is to protect confidential information like we do now in our packets.
So definitely, you'll be hearing more about that as we go along. And thank you for the insight that had been brought up already back in 2004, 2005. All right, then, moving on to the next life-safety-related technology. IT work related to all of the secure entrances at the elementary buildings in the 1920 referendum project were completed prior to the start of the school year. This involves door access, allowing staff to remotely release secure doors, and video surveillance for the secured vestibule.
Any questions on that discussion? Diane?
Right, in the 1920 security grant projects, they're nearing completion as well. These projects include door closure monitoring at all buildings, and this project is about 90% complete.
Anything on that? Okay.
And the last, then, is the IP Clock and Speaker Project at the three high schools is also complete and has been expanded to include two elementary schools. This system allows for implementation of the new integrated alert messaging system. Training on usage of the new system for all building staff will continue during the first semester.
Any questions or discussion on that? Okay, Diane?
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the Technology Committee report, and we have not, as yet, scheduled a next meeting.
Thank you, Diane, appreciate that. And that came, I know Steve and his team have a very busy summer. Technology, a lot of things in technology get done during the summer, so we appreciate Steve and his team working with you on getting this meeting done and getting this brought up to speed on all those topics, so thank you, Diane. Moving on to our Finance and Facilities Committee report given by Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Facilities Committee met on September 9th. On the agenda this evening, we have two information items and one discussion item. The first information item is the monthly budget report. Revenues and expenditures continue to be within budgeted limits for both the general and special education fund. The district is operating in accordance with our approved budget and all other funds as well. Our second information item was capital improvements project report. The committee was provided an update on the capital improvement projects, including the projects completed during the 2018-2019 school year, and the upcoming projects slated for the summers of 2020 through 2022. Please visit the district's webpage to find the facility improvement page with current project updates and other related information. Our one discussion item on the agenda this evening was a report on the fund balance. The committee discussed the breakdown of the district's operational fund balance as of June 30th, 2019, the calculation that determines the fund balance, and reviewed related board policies. We also went over the role fund balance plays in the district's financial operation. This is a discussion item, if somebody would like to discuss something.
Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, there was a lot of confusing information at that FNF meeting. Really wasn't accurate. There's $34 million, it's declared one time a year, it's our financial number, that we use to fund instead of borrowing like we used to. At one time, that fund balance is, as Mr. Clark said, it was like zero. And with some creative gymnastics by Mr. Buckholz, I think we were able to keep the district running even with no fund balance. That was a time when I, I guess, a more, some people would say a more conservative school board felt that spending that in the fund balance was a good idea. Our position has been always to build that fund balance, and we've achieved that fund balance target of 15%. In fact, we're at 20% now on the fund balance. It is a fund balance that's been created by the savings that we've made. A lot of it has come by controlling our costs for staffing significantly. A lot of it has come in the fact that we have gone through, like the Siemens thing, the referendum process, it's allowed us to not have to use those dollars for maintenance dollars. So we built a good, healthy fund balance. There was also confusion about how it affects our credit rating, and it doesn't really, you know, the minor change in our fund balance from whatever we decide to use that extra money for wouldn't impact our credit rating very much at all. And the other part is the fund balance itself is not something that should be commingled with the retirement fund balance. The retirement fund balance is created through the premiums that we pay, both premium share between us and our employees, and we really shouldn't be considering using fund balance dollars to support that fund. We should be using premium dollars to support that fund. Fund balance is for other things and at the discretion of the board. And I think it's important to keep that clear. I would hate to have to take a lone no vote against commingling funds between retirement or between healthcare benefits, premiums, and our fund balance, because I really think that would be improper to commingle those funds.
Other comments, discussion? Over the past number of years, I want to say, Darren, I'd asked this question, and I actually thought it was a shorter period of time, but having a strong fund balance has helped us to avoid our short-term borrows. And that's, how many years have we been able to benefit from that without going to a short-term borrow?
I would put it at like six or seven. Todd, I don't know if you remember, but it's somewhere in that range.
Yeah, like six, maybe seven.
Yeah, so having a strong fund balance, one of the things that has helped us out is with our cash flow, so we don't have to take a short-term borrow. I remember back in the early to mid-'70s, the interest that we might pay in one year for a short-term borrow, just so that we have the appropriate cash flow, I think it hit $900,000 of interest that we paid. So we paid zero in interest for the last six years on a short-term borrow. So that was one benefit of a good, healthy fund balance. Another benefit was, as Kurt had mentioned, our credit rating has been boosted quite a bit over the last few years. And Todd, how many, how do we rate amongst our districts in the state of Wisconsin for our credit rating?
We are like one of 30 districts that have this high of a credit rating. There are four districts, only four districts, that are rated by S&P that are higher than us. And those are relatively small districts with like 30, 40% fund balances.
And this is out of like 420-some districts in the state?
Correct, right.
So pretty, pretty good. And we had to work our way up, because we had some issues a decade ago with the OPEB scenario. So this is part of, this is part of creating a strong fund balance, is part of boosting, helping to boost our credit rating. And also, it's helped us with our self-insurance in terms of, we've been able to start to build a good health care reserve, health coverage reserve. And that's a part of our fund balance. So I'm glad that we've been able, over the last decade, to take a policy that we put in place very seriously to have a minimum of 15% fund balance of our operating costs. So we've worked hard at that, we should be, we should feel good about that. Mr. Ryan?
The healthcare is not part of our fund balance, it's separate from that. The number that we put together is the $35 million is restricted, that's less the healthcare insurance reserve that we have. So we don't, we don't really include, that's a restricted account, that's a restricted account.
But it is part of fund balance. Restricted accounts are part of fund balance.
But you're commingling the two, and you shouldn't commingle the two. And that's, that's what I'm really concerned about, when we talk about them like being one common fund, they're not. We have a hard number associated with our insurance, and we have our overall fund balance, where the restricted number that's in that fund balance is in the reserve.
We have fund balances technically for each fund, right? So Fund 10 is the one we're talking about right now, but there are other funds, too, that we have potentially fund balances in, correct, Dan?
Fund 50...
46?
46, 41. The only one you wouldn't have fund balances is 27, because we have to zero out that fund every year with the transfer to Fund 10.
That's a special education.
Special education.
So, but this is part of Fund 10, correct? The restricted reserves for our healthcare insurance?
Yeah, the categories of fund balance are outlined in the board's fund balance policy. So if you want to see the names or restrictions or designations of fund balance, we did review ones under systems of accounting, and I think the other ones under the fund balance policy. So by definition in our financials, you will see the health insurance reserves as restricted fund balance in the statements.
My concern is that we can't commingle, they're separate. One is funded by insurance premiums, the other one is funded by our excess savings that we make through the district.
I think the definition of restriction, and Darren, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, yeah, we can't go into that to change, to move that around, is that correct?
Matt, I mean, just keep in mind, fund balance, the board has the right to designate, assign, unassign any of these, so...
Including restricted, I guess the question is including restricted funds.
So the board can do and label these sums of money any which way you choose to. I would give you some guidance on maybe how we should go about doing that, but that's your authority as elected officials, so.
There have been instances where districts or municipalities have taken this reserve for self-funding health insurance and used it because they didn't want to raise taxes or they were under revenue controls. And of course, that came back to burn them later on when they had high health claims and no reserve. So you could technically tap into that, I mean, no one would ever recommend that, but the board would have the right to go into that.
By statute, we can do it, but it might not be a good idea.
It would not be a good idea, correct.
Darren?
Yeah, and if you, if you look at, for those of you who have the, it's in your packet, there's a summary of where we are. If you look at the percentage, we also, we often talk about fund balance, and our policy speaks to at least 15%. And Kurt's right in the fact that in that calculation of what percentage fund balance we have, board policy does not take into account restricted fund balance, just for that purpose. So that's why on the handout, it's a different color, if you follow the color coding. Blue is restricted in the sheet and is not included in the, you know, I have us at 19.5% fund balance right now. But that health insurance, though it's technically part of fund balance, is treated separately, both accounting-wise and in board policy. So hopefully that helps.
Is that what you were trying to get at, Mr. Ryan?
That, and I, you know, I think we're all saying the same thing, and I think one of the very accurate points made by Mr. Clark is never use your fund balance for ongoing year-to-year expenditures. You know, it's okay to maybe take a one-time transfer if you're, if you feel like it for something, but not to say, "I'm going to have four more teachers that I can't afford" and fund out all the fund balance on a year-to-year basis. That, that's just not good sound plan. So many districts have gotten into trouble by doing that over the years. And we've been very good, both with Mr. Clark and all his predecessors, of making sure we pay as we go properly. But it's important that if we did have a shortage in the insurance fund, we could borrow from the fund balance to load up that fund, but it should be rebuilt through premiums paid by the insured. That's how it should be built. It shouldn't be using the fund balance itself to support that restricted fund.
Other discussion, questions, comments on fund balance? Mr. McCaffrey?
All righty, our next Finance and Facilities Committee meeting will be held on October 7th at 5:30 in the boardroom.
Just on fund balance, but just a quick note related to the presentation that was given on facilities, both 2019 and the projects laying out. I put a copy of the PowerPoint, and I sent it to you electronically as well. So if you want to take a look at, there's some renderings of the middle schools and things that might be of interest. So just wanted to draw your attention, because I know you have a lot of, you have a lot of paper at your desk, so just wanted to draw special attention to this.
Thank you, Darren.
That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Moving on to other business, are there any recommendations for future items to be agendized in this, the full board meeting, or toss out any suggestions to committee chairs? All right, seeing none, I don't think we have a need to go into closed session tonight, so we are adjourned. Thank you for being here tonight.